Max, let me know when we're ready.
Mayor, you may proceed.
Thank you, Max. Good morning. No, good afternoon, everybody. It is Friday, November 19th, 2021. This is a virtual regular meeting of the Commissioners of the City of Rehoboth Beach. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 2:02 PM. Thank you much for being here. We are going to start with the roll call. If you would raise your hand when you indicate you're here, I appreciate it. Commissioner Susan Gay.
Here.
Commissioner Tony Sharp.
Here.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett.
Here.
Commissioner Edward Schonowski.
Good afternoon, here.
Commissioner Tim Bennett.
Here.
Commissioner Jay Legree.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Stan Mills. We have a full complement and a quorum, so we are able to formally conduct business. Thank you all for being here today. With that, I'd like to also indicate for the record that the City Manager Sharon Lynn is with us today, as is Public Works Director Kevin Williams. Also, City Solicitor Glenn Mendalis. Thank you all for being here. And of course, we have the support of Ann Womack and the IT Department to help run this meeting. With that, I'd like to thank all those that are watching virtually. We do have the ability to come to the anchor room, which is the Commissioners' room, and be here in person if you choose. And we also want to thank the speakers that have pre-registered in advance to be able to speak today. We will call on you, of course, at the appropriate times for the different topics we will be talking about today. I'd like to read those names that are on our to-talk list. That's Carol Everhart of the Rehoboth Beach Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce, Dan Slagel and Greer Manival of the Rehoboth Beach Main Street, Rick Perry, citizen, Tom Evan, Walter Brittingham, Monkey Markert, and Laura Ritter, all citizens of the City of Rehoboth Beach. Thank you all for being here and pre-registering to speak. Again, I'll call on you at the appropriate times during the meeting. We'll go right on to a reminder that support documents, when they are available, are put online on the city's portal, and you can access them at cityrehoboth.com. Go to the right center of the page for the Legislative Portal. Click on that and then look for the meeting date and agenda, and bring that up, and you will be able to find all the support documents that we Commissioners are able to look at today. With that, I want to go to correspondence. We just have one item of correspondence from Randy Hoops, address unknown, and then about the Dolly sign. And again, you can find that embedded into the agenda. With that, I'd like to go to the approval of minutes. There are five sets of minutes, as noted on the agenda, for a special meeting held on October 4th, 2021, executive session held on October 4th, 2021, special meeting held on October 26th, 2021, executive session held on October 26th, 2021, and special meeting minutes held on, for the special meeting held on November 9th, 2021. Are there any corrections to any of those five sets of minutes? Hearing none, I'd like a motion to approve the five sets of minutes as noted.
No move. Second.
So we've got a motion by Commissioner Gay and a second by Commissioner Schonowski to approve the five sets of minutes that I just noted. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll do a group vote. All those in favor of approving the five sets of minutes as noted, please signify by saying aye. And hold your hand up long enough so Ann can do a count. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And the minutes are approved unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the City Managers' report. Sharon Lynn, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The Second Street Water Tank will undergo maintenance beginning on Monday, next Monday. The contractor will be applying a cleaning and protective coating. Several parking spaces will be blocked off, and Elkins Way will be closed to pedestrians during this application. Cleaning of selected stormwater and sanitary sewer lines is scheduled to begin Monday, November 29th, after Thanksgiving. This is part of our annual maintenance and inspection program for our buried infrastructure. The selected streets that are impacted will be posted to the city's website once we get the contractor's schedule. Some minor traffic restrictions may occur when they are cleaning a specific segment of the pipe. Pleased to say that our community Christmas tree and Santa's house both arrived this week at the bandstand and the boardwalk. City staff members have been busy installing Christmas decorations, including a new tree that was installed on Prospect Street, and they are putting up lights throughout the town. The city will officially welcome the holiday season with its annual tree lighting and holiday sing-along event at 6:30 PM, Friday, November 26th. The Chamber of Commerce is coordinating Santa's schedule at the Santa House, and Santa will be in residence beginning Friday, November 26th. Check in with beachfun.com for the full schedule. Budget meetings with department heads began this past week, and they'll continue through mid-December in preparation for the first budget meeting with the Commissioners scheduled for January 10th, 2022. Water main work has been completed on Olive Avenue and continues on Maryland Avenue. Paving on Olive and Maryland will be completed after the water main is replaced on Maryland Avenue, and this is anticipated to be around the first week of December. The water meter replacement contractor is scheduled to begin work in the Rehoboth Gardens area starting November 29th. And demolition and site work has begun at the Delaware Avenue Comfort Station. And just a reminder that the collection for toys donated to the U.S. Marine Corps Toys for Tots Program is underway. Any unwrapped toys and books may be dropped off in boxes that are located in the City Hall and Police Department lobbies, and they'll be there through December 18th. We have one street aid expenditure to Delmarva Power in the amount of $6,196.22 for streetlights.
I'd like a motion to approve in a second, please.
Move to approve. Second.
I've got a motion, I think, by Commissioner Sharp. Is that true?
Yes.
By Commissioner Sharp and a second by Commissioner Gay to authorize the City Manager to pay Delmarva Power the amount of $6,196.22. Are there any further discussion? If not, we'll take a group vote. All those in favor of authorizing the payment of $6,196.22 to Delmarva Power, signify by raising your hand and saying aye. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And the motion's approved unanimously. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move right along to City Solicitor's report. Were you done?
Yes, sir.
You were done.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before you move, I just have one question for the City Manager.
Ma'am, Commissioner Sharp, go ahead.
I had asked before if we had yet to pull together the cost of the accidental overflow over Seewich Weekend.
Yes, we have approximately $4,000 in expenses. That was relayed to me by the Director of Public Works.
Thank you very much.
I also have a question, if I may.
Commissioner Gossett, go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you. Just, City Manager Lynn, do we have any update of the progress of the Y River investment discussions?
Yes, we've been in contact with Emily Nine and the city's bond council from Ballard Spar. We, hopefully, in the next two weeks, will be putting out an advertising solicitation for bid proposals. And it doesn't look like we'll be complete with that project by the end of the year, but we will be soon after January 1st.
And are we far enough along that we would have any anticipated costs on that yet? I know we've had some estimates, ballparks, but anything that we could begin to really look hard costs that?
No, not really, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Legree, please. You're muted.
I want to go, hop on with Tony. Have we gotten any results from the samplings that we did out in the marsh after our overflow? Have those come back yet? Public Works Director.
Yes, Commissioner. All the test results we've had so far have come back well within compliance. I don't know what the specific ranges are that we would look for out there, but nothing that has come to us from Dunrec with response to the testing results that we've provided them.
Thank you very much. I was sure that the spill was just really minimal when I looked at it, and that's great news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for the City Manager? If not, we'll move on. Next item of business is departmental reports. You can see that embedded into the agenda. I'm sorry, City Solicitor.
Thank you. I just wanted to update the Commissioners quickly on a couple items of litigation. First, the Ocean Bay Mart case. That's the Beach Walk case, which is currently in the Court of Chancery. As you know, Ocean Bay Mart's vested rights claims were rejected recently. Ocean Bay Mart did file a motion for re-argument, which is basically asking the judge to rehear those vested right claims. The judge rejected that request for re-argument, I think, yesterday or perhaps the day before. So now the last opportunity for Ocean Bay Mart is an appeal to the Delaware Supreme Court, and we don't know whether they'll take that appeal or not. So that's the status of Ocean Bay Mart. The Clear Space case, if you recall, the current status of that is the parties are kind of arguing over what constitutes the record of the case for the appeal. So that's been fully briefed at this point. And just this week, the judge set oral argument for December 8th at 11:00 AM, or 1:00 PM, I'm sorry, to hear argument on what the record should be in that case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn. Commissioner Legree, you have a question for the Solicitor?
City Solicitor, is there a window for appeal on the Bay Mart question?
30 days, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, we want to take a step back to the City Manager. She has one more thing she'd like to report.
Thank you, Mayor. We just today received a check from Emmett Auction. We held our city auction, annual auction on November 6th, just a couple weeks ago, and I think this is a record without checking. But the city, the amount, total amount of commissioned sales were $217,650 less their commission and advertising costs. The city received a check today in the amount of $183,250. So we're very pleased with those results, and I'd like to thank Department of Public Works, Public Works Director, and certainly Art, our lead mechanic/technician for organizing that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager. I'm sure most of the Commissioners are salivating over what can we do with that $183,000. It's probably already spent in most of our minds. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to go to the next item of business, which is departmental reports. Embedded into the agenda are three reports. Building and Licensing Department Report, Police Department Report, and Fire Department Report. If you've never looked at these reports, I suggest you take a look at them. You'll find, I think, a lot of interesting information in them. With that, we'll go to the Board and Commission Reports, where none were identified. We typically get something from the Planning Commission or the other groups, and we don't have anything to report at this time. With that, we'll go to the next item, which is Committee Reports. There's not been a lot of activity because we've been changing over chairs. We do have a written report embedded in the agenda from Commissioner Susan Gay, who is Chair of the Trees and Green Infrastructure Committee. And it speaks for itself unless, Commissioner Gay, you have anything further to add?
No, I don't, unless there are questions.
All right. Very good. Thank you very much. And with that, we're going to go to Liaison Reports. Commissioner Susan Gay, you are the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, and Carol is with us today.
Carol, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have a lot to report. I can tell, I'll give you the occupancy first. We're comparing 2020 on midweek Wednesday to 2021. Wednesday, 2020, there were 60,724 occupied rooms. Went up, 2021, that went up to 98,678. For Saturday night, 2020, 86,282, and that increased in 2021 to 124,558. On another financial note, we did place the Seewich financials into the Cape Gazette, and it will be on our website and in our newsletter, if you have interest in that. Santa's House, I did hear the City Manager say that is on the boardwalk. It's being decorated, and Santa is all set for the 26th and a schedule thereafter. I do want to make sure the Commissioners are invited to the Christmas party. It'll be at Dogfish. It's December 9th. It will begin at 5 o'clock. And then legislatively, it might be of interest to you to know that SB 1, it's a Senator McBride bill. It has a lot to do with family leave. Our chamber is opposed to it. And I can tell you that, as far as I know right now, Bethany Finwick in the Central Chamber and the State Chamber are also opposed to the bill at this time. It may end that that will be unanimous among all the chambers opposed to that bill. And other than that, unless you have a question, we're in pretty good shape.
Carol, we thank you very much for being on board today. Commissioner Gossett.
It's just one question. Thanks for the update, Carol. With your regards to the opposition to SB 1, is that on your website, the specific details, or the letter to the Senator?
It will be on our website under Legislative. So if you go to the site index and just scroll down to Legislative, I just completed that meeting, our notations. So give it till Monday to be up there. But that was, we had a board meeting yesterday, and the opposition was there.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions of Carol? If not, we'll move to the next liaison. Commissioner Jay Legree is a liaison for the Rehoboth Beach Historical Society.
I just want to remind everybody that the annual members' meeting starts today at 4:00 with the gathering. And tomorrow, the, is the beginning of the exhibition for the winning photographs from the Delaware Beach Life Photo Contest. And it's going to be great. The public will be invited, and that will go from, I think, from tomorrow until the 30th of January. And everybody should be able to have a chance to see it in those times. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to the next Committee, Commission liaison for Main Street. That's Commissioner Ed Schonowski.
Thanks, Mayor. I believe we've got Dan and Greer are both on the line, so I'll turn it over to them.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. There's a couple items that we wanted to go over with you. Number one is being a Community Unity Dinner that we're thrilled that's happening this year. It's on Sunday, December 4th, at the Convention Center, from 4:30 to 7:30. It is sponsored by the Big Fish Charity Foundation, and many of the downtown businesses are donating to this event. We're very grateful and thankful. Also, we're thankful to the Mayor and the Commissioners for volunteering to serve at the Community Unity Dinner. We have a wide variety of entertainment this year and for the entire family to enjoy. We also are following COVID restrictions, the regulations provided by the state of Delaware. So I wanted to mention that. Also, we're thrilled to be involved with Reeds Across America. It is in December 18th at noon. This combined effort by the RH, the Homeowners Association in Rehoboth, and Rehoboth Main Street. We have 140 veteran grave sites that are going to be honored, and we're having reefs laid on. This is going to be at the F Worth Church Cemetery. And we're very excited about the contributions that have been donated from the Community Bank and Highway 1, and also private donations to be able to have this event. We are looking forward, volunteers at this point, to lay the reefs. So if anyone would like to join us, please let us know. We are looking for volunteers to lay the reefs. Also, the RIB, Rehoboth in Bloom Dance, the oldies dance, has been postponed to April 2022.
And a couple of things that I want to make to your attention. You know, we're maybe seeing, getting the word out about everything that's going on in Rehoboth. And we've been fortunate to, with the latest Town and Cottage Awards that just occurred, there was a really nice article in the Cape Gazette. I'm sure you probably have seen that. And we also, through WDRE, have had three nice spots on TV for the Reeds Across America and for Rehoboth in Bloom. And we'll pursue to have them involved with the different events that we're doing to get the word out about all the good things that are happening in Rehoboth. You know, the Rehoboth Board, we, our Main Street Board has been really busy working now and developing and compiling for the proposal for the 2020 budget and trying to put those pieces together. And as a part of that, our five key committees are currently wrapping up their work plans and the strategic plans, as well as their budgets for this 2020 year. Hard to believe it's 2022 already, about that. And as these events come together, we'll be very excited to share these events and projects with you in the new year. So I wanted to thank you all for all of your support, and thank you for taking the time to come and talk with us on the one-to-ones for here at Main Street.
And also for me, I appreciate that you took the time to met with Greer and I. Also, I wanted to let you know, you know, visiting downtown businesses during the week and on the weekends, when I'm out and about, I'm hearing a lot of positive feedback for the fall that a lot of the merchants downtown are up from the fall of 2019. So I just wanted to share some positive news about what's going on downtown. Thank you. And if there's any questions.
Dan, one clarification. Community Unity Dinner is Sunday, December 5th. Just wanted to clarify that date.
My apologies.
My bad.
I would have been there on the wrong day. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Tim Bennett, you have a question?
Yes, for the laying of the reefs, is there a particular day you're going to do that?
Yeah, the Sundays.
It's, I'm sorry, I'm right here. The reefs are being laid on December 18th at noon.
December 18th. Okay, thank you.
If you would like to volunteer, we're asking the volunteers to be there around 11:30.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to our last liaison. Commissioner Ed Schonowski is the liaison for the Cape and Lopin Senior Center.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing too much new with that organization. They are continuing to require proof of vaccination and the use of masks inside their facility. And Mayor, you'll be happy to hear they are potentially looking at bringing the pancake breakfast back in February.
Excellent. Excellent. I've been waiting to hear that. Any questions for Ed? If not, I want to thank all the Commissioner liaisons. And with that, we'll go to the next bit of business, which is to hear and consider an administrative appeal requested by David Clark on behalf of Yavar Rozayev, owner of the property located at 60 Maryland Avenue pursuant to Section 253-12C of the Municipal Code and pertains to the removal of one Memorial Ginkgo tree located between the sidewalk and the curb adjacent to 60 Maryland Avenue. This is an appeal of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission's denial of the tree removal request on March 22, 2021. If you look in the agenda, you will see support documents embedded into the agenda. With that, I'd like to give a little background. And that is, on March 22nd, 2021, the Parks and Shade Tree Commission convened to hear an appeal filed by Sussex Tree, Inc. on behalf of Yavar Rozayev. The appeal was based on the City Arbors' decision to deny the removal of a 15-inch Memorial Ginkgo tree located between the sidewalk and the curb adjacent to 60 Maryland Avenue. On October 7th, 2021, approximately seven months after the Parks and Shade Tree Commission denied the original appeal, Mr. Clark, on behalf of Yavar Rozayev, filed the current appeal to the Board of Commissioners. The authority that we get to review this appeal comes from Section 253-20, Review of Commissioners Within the Tree Code. And that says, "The City Commissioners shall have the right to review the conduct, acts, and decisions of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission. Any person may appeal from any ruling or order of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission to the City Commissioners, who may hear the matter and make final decision." Before I read the rules and how we would proceed with an appeal, I'd like to suggest that, are there any preliminary matters that anyone wants to discuss that would resolve this matter without a full hearing? Hearing no comment, we'll go, and I'd like to share with you what the steps are being taken. We've already acknowledged that we have a quorum of Commissioners here, so we're able to conduct this administrative appeal hearing. Roll call was taken, and we have a quorum. The, providing a brief overview. What will come next will be the City Arbors will be called on to issue her report. After that, the appellant is providing an opportunity to make his presentation. Members of the Board of Commissioners, after that, will ask the appellant any questions that they might have. The Mayor will then ask for testimony from any member of the public wishing to be heard. The Board of Commissioners then will enter into dialogue and discussion concerning the case, culminating, hopefully, in a motion concerning whether, under the circumstances, the appellant should be permitted or not permitted to remove the subject tree. Glenn, do you have anything further you would like to add before we call on Liz Lingo?
Thank you, Mayor. You gave a great background, so I don't think I need to do anything on that. I would like to put on the record those items that are embedded in the agenda. So the Commissioners have before them a public notice that was posted on October 26th, 2021. They have a letter of October 7th, 2021, to the Mayor and Commissioners from David Clark. That was the letter requesting this appeal. Also, the Commissioners have the March 22, 2021 minutes of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission, where this matter was originally heard. There's also a memorandum, or the report of the City Arbors, dated January 6th, 2021, and she'll be issuing that in just a moment. There is a City Tree Pruning, Planting, Removal Application for Parks and Shade Tree Commission dated October 2nd, 2020. And then there's a proposal from Sussex Tree Incorporated to remove the tree. And that is it. Mr. Mayor, thank you for obliging me and not me to do that.
Thank you very much. Liz Lingo, I see you're on board. Would you like to give your report, please?
Sure. Did you want me to reread my original report? Or is it as part of the record? Is that okay? It's up to the Commissioners.
If I recall, it's one page.
It's one page, and it's part of the record. But if any members of the public are going to be commenting on this, they may not have had a chance to review it. So if you wouldn't mind reading it, Liz, that would be appreciated.
Sure. The dates might seem a little funny because I think I have the day that I read it in there. The following is a report of the City Arbors with regard to the above referenced request that is to be heard before the Commission on January 25th, 2021. The applicant has submitted a request to remove one 15-inch Ginkgo tree located between the sidewalk and curb adjacent to 60 Maryland. There are no adjacent trees. The Ginkgo was planted in memory of Florence A. The Ginkgo was planted in memory of Florence Ayers after 1984. Ginkgos are a common street tree in the country due to their urban tolerance and striking fall color. However, this specific tree is female and the tree is typically male specimens to eliminate the inconvenience of the fleshy fruits. The tree has good form and proper pruning has directed growth away from the utility lines. As per City Code, Parks and Shade Tree Commission has authority to permit the removal and require replacement of street trees. 253-12 Maintenance C. No person shall plant, spray, preserve, prune, remove, cut above ground, or otherwise disturb any tree on any street or municipal-owned property without first receiving permission from the Parks and Shade Tree Commission. Any tree removed from municipal-owned property must be replaced unless otherwise authorized by the Parks and Shade Tree Commission.
Thank you. Any questions of Liz? If not, Glenn, are there any further instructions you want to give to the Board of Commissioners on how to approach this?
Well, what I'll note, Mayor, is that the Board of Commissioners' role today is to determine if the City Arboreus' decision to deny the tree removal permit was correct or erroneous. If you find it to be correct, your decision will affirm the decision of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission. If you find it to be erroneous, the appeal will be granted and the Parks and Shade Tree Commission will therefore be reversed, allowing the tree to be removed. There, you know, a couple of things to keep in mind here, not that it should drive your decision, but this is a memorial tree, it is a street tree. The code lists seven reasons under which Liz, as the City Arboreus, is able to grant a tree removal permit. If it meets one of those exceptions, she can grant the permit. For, for, right, for trees on private property. This, however, is a street tree and Commissioners have a little bit more discretion. The Parks and Shade Tree Commission has generally looked to those seven criteria to consider a, a, a street tree, but you're not bound to determine that this tree complies with one of those exceptions to take the tree down. So you have broader discretion here to decide what you think is appropriate. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the appellant. Now, I understand you're not on camera. Our camera system's not working today except for our little laptops here, so you don't need to put your best face forward.
I only have a good face.
No, that's all right, that's all right. Go ahead, introduce yourself if you would and then, and then give us your. Now, you need to hold the microphone probably within an inch of your face, so pull it forward to your, if you would. There we go.
Hi, my name is David Clark. I'm representing Yavar Rozayev in the issue of this tree at 60 Maryland. And, you know, we completely understand that this is a memorial tree and it was planted in honor of somebody, but the tree is really a nuisance. And, and unfortunately, we're not, we did not receive notice about the, the Park and Tree Tree Commission meeting, so we were unable to attend either, either virtually or in person. I've been complaining about this tree for a number of years. The fleshy fruit that falls from this tree falls from right about Labor Day to what I picked up off my sidewalk this morning. In the Parks and Trade Tree Commission, somebody said it smelled like spoiled butter or it was a slight inconvenience, and it, it's not a slight inconvenience. It is a major inconvenience, both to myself and to the tenants and to just regular travelers in, in Rehoboth. Everybody that stays at the Breakers Hotel walks by 60 Maryland, past this tree, and it literally smells like dog crap. So.
Can I interrupt you just for a moment? Because Mr. Clark brought a bag of the fruit, I guess, that, that falls. He has it here in this room, but the Commissioners aren't able to see it. So if I can get it from you, I'll.
Yep, absolutely.
So I'm holding up the, the bag, if you can see it, these are what the, these are what it looks like.
Okay. So this was picked up off the sidewalk that is just my sidewalk, from the sidewalk, from the city sidewalk to the steps of, of 60 Maryland. That was just picked up today and we're kind of at the end of the season on this. September and October are really bad. So a couple of things that came up during the Parks and Shade Tree Commission. There was questions of, as far as the gender of the tree. Lots of cities, Bloomington, Minnesota, Lexington, Kentucky, cities have banned the planting of female Ginkgo trees just for this purpose. Eastern Maryland has removed, or Eastern, Eastern PA has removed all their Ginkgo trees. The City of Washington DC goes, that has many blocks of female Ginkgos. They actually go block by block and allow citizens to ask if they want the trees removed from their property, from the city streets, just because of the problem with these trees. So that's one. Two, some people suggest that the gender of the tree somehow changes or that this male tree would take on female characteristics and, and produce this fruit. So whether it's male or female, it's producing the fruit, that makes it a female tree. And that was what was listed in, in Liz's report to the Shading Tree Commission on the 22nd. The other thing is with this is that, looking at the City Code, because by it being a, a street tree and a memorial tree, even if it's my tree, I can't do anything about it. And I still don't know if it's Yavar's tree or if it is a city tree. I cannot get clarification. But the City Code 253-11 Utility said, "No street tree other than those species listed as small tree shall be planted under or within 10 feet, 10 lateral feet of overhead utility wires." Utility wires run right through the middle of this tree. So if you look at the species list in, at 253-7 of the code, a female Ginkgo never appears in any list. Actually, I don't think the city under any circumstances would approve anybody, even on their own private property, to plant this tree. Secondly, the male Ginkgo, which is, this is what presumably was planted originally, is a large tree. So it should have never been planted in between the curb and the sidewalk, and it's certainly not under a power line. So my main contention is, is that this tree is a nuisance. We are willing to pay the cost to have the tree removed. We are willing to plant an appropriate tree in that section of sidewalk between the, the curb and the, and the sidewalk. We don't want to take down the tree. These trees are, are great trees when they're males trees. They're very hardy, they're good for urban living, they're very resistant to disease, which is why when this tree was planted, I think people thought they were planting a male tree. Obviously, that is not the case. Lastly, I, I just, you know, this property was acquired by Yavar approximately 2012. It has always been a rental. It has been within good standing. We have never had any complaints with our tenants. And just this year alone, this property will generate $8,118.45 in rental tax revenue to the City of Rehoboth. And, and the people that are paying these taxes are guests in the city and literally many of them have complained to me about the, the problems with this. I go over before we check in and, and try to clean it up the best I can. I've hosed off the sidewalk a number of times. It's, it's just a burden for us to keep doing this. You know, I, I don't really know what the process is with this. I would urge all of you to go look at the sidewalk. This, the sidewalk was redone with part of the landscape, with the, the city landscape, Lake Avenue project. It's just covered in stains from this, this tree. If anybody has any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, David. With that, we'll go to the Commissioners. Are there any questions of the applicant?
Mayor, I've.
Commissioner Schronowski, go ahead.
I, I think this is probably more of a question for, for Liz or Glenn. What are the seven reasons why the standard used or that, that Liz is allowed to use on why a tree could be removed?
Let me find those, Commissioner, and I'll read them to you under the code. So the seven reasons, so the seven reasons are, it says, so it says at 253-30 subsection A, tree removal permit. No tree removal permits, and again, this is for private property, but they use them analogously.
Understood.
Tree removal permit, no tree removal permit shall be issued unless the city finds that at least one of the following criteria is satisfied with respect to each protected tree designated for removal. One, in the case of an application for a building or demolition permit or for approval of a subdivision, the tree is located within the net buildable area of a given lot as identified on the Tree Survey Protection Planting Plan, provided that alternatives under 253-35F of this article have been considered. Those alternatives are a, a, you know, shifting the home or doing some different things with, within the lot so that you can save a tree if there's a, if there's a possibility of doing that. Number two, the tree is located within an existing or proposed public or utility company right-of-way and relocation of such right-of-way or the use thereof is not reasonably practicable. Number three, the tree is located within an existing or proposed public easement, stormwater management tract or facility, provided that only the minimum area reasonably necessary for the public service or use shall be considered for purposes of determining whether there is necessity, necessity for tree removal. Number four, the tree is located where it creates or will create a material safety or health hazard or nuisance with respect to existing or proposed structures or vehicles or pedestrian routes, and such hazard or nuisance is not innate to or commonly associated with the existence of trees in general. For example, lightning, wet leaves on the ground during rainstorms. Number five, the tree is located where it interferes with the installation, delivery, or maintenance of proposed or existing utility services to the lot and relocation of such services is not reasonably practicable, except that a higher degree of necessity must be demonstrated by the applicant in the case of a historic tree. Number six, the tree is determined by the city to be dead, significantly diseased, severely injured, or in danger of falling. Or seven, the tree prevents reasonable development of a lot that is otherwise permissible under the city ordinances. However, a tree removal permit shall not be granted where the applicant has failed to design and locate the proposed improvements, demolition, or subdivision so as to minimize the removal of trees consistent with the permitted use of the lot and shall be granted only after full consideration of alternatives under Section 255-35 of this article, which is, are the exceptions we just discussed. Those are the seven, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tim Bennett, please.
City Solicitor, could you please repeat number four again?
Sure. Number four is, "The tree is located where it creates or will create a material safety or health hazard or nuisance with respect to existing or proposed structures or vehicles or pedestrian routes, and such hazard or nuisance is not innate, innate to or commonly associated with the existence of trees in general. For example, lightning, wet leaves on the ground during rainstorms."
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions from the Commissioners for the applicant? If not, I'm going to go to the members of the public wishing to be heard in this topic. Carol Everhart, do you have anything for this topic? She's still on?
I believe she's dropped off the call.
She dropped the call. How about Dan or Greer?
I have no comment, Mayor.
All right, either of you. Rick Perry, please. And if you all would, please identify yourself and what your relationship is to the City of Rehoboth Beach, including whether you're on any committees or commissions and whether you are, if you are, whether you're speaking on behalf of that committee or commission. Rick Perry?
Yes, Richard Perry, 46 Pennsylvania Avenue. I can only say from personal experience and having encountered these Ginkgo trees and the fruit that they drop in DC and also where I used to have a home in Maryland, they are stinky, they are slippery, and, you know, I can certainly understand that there is a hazard and a nuisance here. That's just from my personal experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Tom Evans, please.
Stan, I'd ask that you go skip me for the moment and come back to me, but why don't you please take the two members of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission that are on board first?
Sure. Walter Bredeham, you're next. Nope, they're going to pass. Bunky Marker. Looks like he dropped off.
Well, he's still there, but I'll go ahead anyway. How's that?
Go ahead, Tom.
Well, so, Tom Evans, 512 Newcastle Street, Rehoboth. My profession for 40 years, professionally 40 years as a botanist and a plant pathologist, full professor at the University of Delaware, 37 years of service there. All my degrees are in botany or botany and plant pathology, and I've been dealing with Ginkgos since a young kid when I worked at LA County Arboretum where there are many Ginkgos. And people didn't care about planting male or female, we have both, but I have a, both a professional, personal, and research background that covers things like Ginkgo. And I don't argue that he, they believe it is a problem, but I'm going to direct you to a couple of things. So all the facts are in front of Mayor and Commissioners who may or may not have listened to the entire audio recording of the, of the hearing previously, is that I still say that this is a male, is a male by form. It is, what, what we call it is sex conversion or sex, sex switching. I sent a copy of the link to this to Susan, Susan Gates, so she'd have it. It is, it is not common, but it happens enough that you see it in the literature quite frequently under stress or it's a, it's supposed to be, for evolutionary biologists, one of the reasons why this is one of the oldest plants living on the planet is the males get tired of hoping that the females are producing seeds. These are not fruits, these are fleshy seeds. They don't produce flowers, they produce cones somewhat like a pine tree would, but not exactly. And they, they can be stinky when you crush them and they're in the heat. But this is a male that produces some fleshy seeds that will fall to the ground. They, if you want to, and this will happen after this hearing, I did an inventory of what I could find. I knew of three or four Ginkgos in town. The city has done a very good job of picking male Ginkgos. They don't actually pick them. The industry has tried to have a system that prevents females from being planted. So there's actually another male just around the corner from this property on Baltimore. It's a small male, may have been planted as recently as two or three years ago, it looks like. There's another one on Rodney, it is a male also, not producing fruit, either seeds, either of those. There's also a very large one in the park on Silver Lake in Country Club Estates. No, no female parts at all. And then there's one very large, very old, robust female on Silver Lake, excuse me, on Lake Drive next to Silver Lake in the Easterly block of that. And if you want to see by comparison what a female Ginkgo produces, go look now, it's still got a few Ginkgo nuts, as they like to call them, the reproductive structures in the tree, but there are tens of thousands of these fleshy, well, they're still intact, so the nuts, a few have been smashed. There is light odor, not terrible odor. It does leave marks on the sidewalk. It looks like the homeowners are very happy with it. It's got a diameter of, I don't know, 20, 30 inches, but the form of the tree is clearly female and it's clearly producing an abundance, but they don't deem to be a nuisance. And I, one thing I could say is, a nuisance is really in the nose and eyes of the beholder. And these people seem to not be on Lake Drive all that bothered by it because it's a gorgeous tree. I can send you the link to the sex conversion or sex switching if you want, but that's probably the reason this has not produced these reproductive structures for some 30 years. I, I think people would be much more aware of that Ginkgo if it had been planted a female. And it also would be probably producing maybe as much as 10 times more if it was a female. That doesn't make it any better for the appellant, I realize. But I'll take you back to the section that Glenn read. And this is the one that they, or at least as that was during the hearing, was, was indicated that this is a nuisance tree. And the, the key part of that whole section four or line four of 253-30 is the last part of the sentence, which I will say what's in parenthesis is a little bit cobbled up, but it basically says, you, you can't say that a tree can be cut down because it's behaving like a tree. a tree in general. It says, the existence of trees in general. Trees drop leaves, trees drop fruit, true fruit. I have, I have a couple of choke cherries that stain my car every year. I have a mulberry that stains my shoes and my rugs if I'm not careful. Now, they don't smell, but they stain. I mean, I don't think Liz should let me cut them down because they are causing dropping fruits on my car and staining my car in either case. So, the code says, if you're picking nuisance, you can't blame it for having leaves drop on the ground, and you can't blame it for anything else that is commonly associated with trees or is associated with trees in general. Those are the facts and evidence, it's up to you guys to, you know, figure out what to do with it, but in the exact language of the code, that tree is doing very well, as the appellant said, you know, it's quite hap, well, he said both, but it is quite happy there. It's not the best place to plant any kind of tree, but, you know, you want a stress-tolerant tree, a genko is a very stress-tolerant tree. The only problem is this one has converted not all of its branches, they usually convert a certain percentage of their branches to being female, so that it can produce seeds, so it can survive to the next generation, and that's its mechanism. That's one out of four that the city has planted that's done that, and it is not illegal to plant a female genko. It's not recommended, male genkos are recommended. It's been said by several people, at least one today, and at least one during the hearing before the Parks and Shade Tree Commission, that it's illegal. There's nothing illegal about planting a female on private property, certainly, the city could make that a law if they like, but it's not there in the code, it recommends that we plant male genkos. This was a male genko, it's just gotten a little bit transgendered on us. It's all yours.
Thank you, Tom. I don't see Bunky having gotten on here, so we'll go to the next and last speaker, is Laura Ritter. Laura, if you're talking, you're muted.
Hi, everyone, I just came on actually because Bunky was not sure he was going to be here. I wanted to answer any questions in case the commissioners had any questions of the, of anyone on the tree commission, because I know it's, you know, sometimes you have to wonder why we voted the way we did. I believe this was, and I think it's in the minutes, a unanimous vote, because we felt like the, just as Tom just said, we can't let, we can't take down a tree for being a tree. Trees are inconvenient, all trees have some kind of inconvenience, you know, pine trees drop needles and other trees you have to rake up the leaves, and this one has a special inconvenience, but we didn't feel that it rises to the level of some, of a nuisance that requires being removed. It's a beautiful tree, and, and there was nothing in the record that said it was so much of a nuisance that it should be removed. And that was basically my thinking when I voted for it, and I'm familiar with this, with this type of tree, there's one right in front of my daughter's house, and I know I know that they're inconvenient, but I, I don't think that the, this is me speaking personally, not as somebody voting on the commission, but in part of my thinking is that we can't, we can't just take down a tree because it has some inconveniences. We, we would take them all down if that were the case. So if anyone has a question, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you, Laura. I see Frank, Bunky Marker did come on. Bunky, do you, would you like to say anything? Unmute yourself if you're trying to say something. Bunky, we can't hear you, so if you get on and want to speak, speak up, and I'll try to get back to you. With that, otherwise, I'm going to close the public section. David, did you have something else you'd like to say before we go to Commissioner discussion? Go ahead.
One thing, Tom Evans is contending that this is a male tree, the city arborist clearly stated in her minutes that this is a female tree. I have read that these trees can take up to 17 years to start producing fruit, and when they do so, they make up for it by producing more and more fruit every year. So this problem is only going to exacerbate as time goes by. The other thing that Mr. Evans mentioned was the tree on Lake Avenue that is now 20 to 30 inches in diameter, I think he said, that's going to cause a huge problem in the future in this area, because it is planted in between the side and the curb. There is not room for a 30-inch diameter tree there. It is already impacting the sidewalk, and it is already impacting the structure of the curb there. As far as it being a nuisance, there's a parking spot located directly under that tree, and, and like Mr. Perry said, these fleshy seeds are slippery. It is a high-traffic area. What you see there was just what was picked up from my sidewalk, from the sidewalk to the curb, not on the city sidewalk. So, look, we agree, it's a beautiful tree, but it is beyond a reasonable nuisance. These are not raking leaves, these are not pine needles that are falling. Generally, cities have banned planting female genko trees. That's why the city code specifically says male trees only, not to mention, this is a large tree, it is planted between the curb and the sidewalk. Now is a good time, while this is still manageable, to take down this tree and replant something that is more appropriate for that space. We don't want to get rid of the tree, I want to get rid of the mess. Lastly, my other thing is, is this a city tree? I mean, he mentioned that these trees were planted by the city, my hunch would be that this would be a city tree.
Yeah, I mean, the city arborist in her report calls it a city tree, so I think the city's position is that it is a city tree.
Okay, well then, I contend to the city to clean up their mess, because I'll be honest, frankly, I'm tired of it. I mean, I don't live at the property, I got to drive over there, I spend a lot of time cleaning this up, but given the nuisance that the tree proposes and the future problem as this tree continues to grow, it's, it's already, like I said, already impacting the curb and the sidewalk, and that is only going to get worse. And since we're on record that this is a city tree, approximately two to three years ago, we were cited, and I had to repair the sidewalk in front of the house. That is, going forward, that is no longer the case. That's the city's responsibility to repair curbs and sidewalks that are damaged by city trees. Thank you.
Thank you, David. With that, I'm going to close the public comment section of this appeal hearing. I would like to acknowledge one bit of correspondence that was received, I believe, just today, so it's not embedded in the agenda, it is from Kitty Cole, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but essentially, she lives on 37 Olive Avenue, one street over, in the second block from the ocean. She indicates that the beautiful tree located at 60 Maryland Avenue between the curb and sidewalk, as most trees are located, should not be cut down. I've lived on Olive Avenue for 75 years and walked by and admired the beauty of that tree for at least 40 years. I've shown the tree to many people because I've never seen one like it in Rehoboth, it's very rare and beautiful. Why would anyone wish to destroy a perfect tree? And Rehoboth Beach claims to be a tree city, so how could the city allow someone to cut down this perfect tree? That's a condensed version of her correspondence there. With that, we will open it up for questions and discussion among the commissioners. At some point culminating, if desired, in a motion to, concerning whether, under the circumstances, the appellant should be permitted or not permitted to remove the subject tree, and I would suggest that the motion be made in the affirmative, regardless of how your intent, the motion maker intends to vote, would like the motion in the affirmative. Let's open it to commissioners, anybody? For discussion?
I'll, I'll go ahead. I walk by that almost every day, I agree, it's a nuisance. It smells, when it's wet, they are slippery. I witnessed an abundance of, of the seed droppings, I've witnessed Mr. Clark out there cleaning it up very often, I would agree that it's a nuisance. You know, there's, there's, whether it's male or female, it's dropping the seeds, there's the reason why we don't plant females that drop seeds, you know, I think sometimes we just have to use a little common sense, if the applicant is willing to plant, bear the cost, and plant a more appropriate tree in that spot, you know, I don't know why we wouldn't just let them do that.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Any other commissioners entering this discussion?
Just a point of clarification, there was comment about it's illegal to plant a genko, female genko tree. Is that prohibited in our code, either Solicitor or Ms. Lingo?
No, it's not prohibited.
Thank you.
Can I add something?
Commissioner Bennett?
Are genko trees listed as preferred or recommended trees to plant on the, on the city's tree list?
So under, so 2537 is species to be planted, the following list constitutes the official street tree species. Under large trees is male genko is one of the trees.
So it is listed?
It is.
Male.
As a male, right.
Thank you. Commissioner Legree?
Did I hear that this tree was interfering with power lines? And if that...
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner, sorry.
If that's the case, is Delmarva been cutting, making a martini tree out of it?
So, Delmarva Power, we are always in close contact with them and their contractor, who is Davy Tree, and they have no issues with the tree at this time.
Have they been cutting the tree?
Well, yeah, every tree that's near wires pretty much gets pruned every four years, but it's actually between our city contractor pruning and their pruning, the pruning has created a nice directed growth away from the main utility line, so that's eliminated any issues up to this point.
So the answer is yes, they are having to trim the, the tree is interfering with the power lines?
No, it's not interfering with the power lines, it's part of regular maintenance, they trim every, every tree that's in any proximity to their power lines, which would be the upper power lines, the lower is like Comcast, Verizon. So, no, there's been no issue stated, just regular maintenance.
If they don't trim my trees, they interfere with the power lines, and maybe this is a wonder tree, or some tree that, that I cannot fathom in my mind, but thank, thank you very much.
Any other commissioners?
I do.
Commissioner Gay?
Yeah, I'm sort of following up on Commissioner Legree's question, especially on Liz's response. I do, first of all, what I was going to say is that, you know, this was a unanimous vote by the Parks and Shade Tree Commission, something I don't think we should lose sight of, because they had a very detailed conversation about it, and I think one of the main issues was this, this criteria about, you know, criteria number four, which is that if it creates, if it's a nuisance, it has to be a nuisance, it's not innate or commonly associated with the existence of trees in general, and as we've said multiple times, both at that hearing and today, this is a tree being a tree and dropping fruit, and I do believe, I was interested in this when it, when the appeal first happened, but the science that was given by our local resident scientist, that it is indeed a male tree, because if it weren't, it would be dropping a lot more fruit or would have over the years, so I'm sort of satisfied that it's a male genko, which actually we even have on our list as plantable, but in the interest of the utilities in particular, because I know that's a problem through, you know, throughout town, but in Liz's initial report back in March, there's a line in here that says, "The tree has good form and proper pruning has directed growth away from the utility lines." So that, I don't think that's been a factor from, you know, day one of this case in terms of the utilities, so those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Commissioner Legree?
Is this tree going to stay 15 inches, or is it going to grow into the sidewalk again?
Is that a rhetorical question, or are you asking Liz?
Liz, is this tree going to stay this dimension, or is it going to grow into the sidewalk again?
I'm not sure about growing into it again, since I'm not aware of that. I mean, trees grow, but at a certain point, it will slow its growth down because it will run out of, run out of root space. I mean, you can look at some of the street trees we have that are much larger, and we, you know, when we go through and do our city projects with curbing sidewalks and roads, we do take special care to preserve the trees, whether or not they, you know, that includes grinding a sidewalk or leaving a small section a curb. So, that's something that, you know, between the city manager, the public works director, the contractor and I, we all judge on an individual basis. But overall, the, the arching thing is, if it's a healthy tree, we try to preserve it.
Ms. Lingo, do you, do you know the approximate age, or can you guesstimate the approximate age of the tree?
Well, the memorial tablet, I think, who it was in honor of passed in the 80s, so my guess would be somewhere around there, and then with Kitty Cole's letter saying she's been walking by it for 40 years, that sounds about right, and then on top of that, if typically when they begin to fruit, it is about, you know, somewhere in that 20 to 30-year range, I believe, so that timeframe all, all adds up, that would make sense, it's around 40 years old.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners? I'd like to add that I used to live on Maryland Avenue up until almost a year ago, I lived on the Maryland Avenue for 23 years. I walked daily by this tree, walking the dog, walking with my wife, walking to City Hall, wherever, and for 20 of those years, I walked by that exact tree on that sidewalk three times a day. You know, in terms of trees and interference of power lines, I had beautiful trees on my lots on Maryland Avenue, and yes, of course, they were under the power line, just like this tree, and interfered with the power lines at certain times, so yes, Delmarva Power or their subcontractor came by and trimmed, trimmed them, nice little Vs out of there, it wasn't the prettiest thing, but they would grow back and then have to re-trim them. So, that's something I think that just happens, that unless we want to get rid of all the trees underneath power lines, we have to tolerate that and manage it. You know, I'm mindful that we are a tree city, and because of that, I think we have a responsibility to manage our trees, and somewhat of the same philosophy that Tom Evans mentioned, I believe that we tolerate trees, you know, they have the acorns that fall down, and the leaves, and the fruits, and the mulberry fruits that fall down. Right on my property, I'm a tree hugger as well, for 23 years, I've been a tree hugger in town. My new property has some oak, an oak that's 100 years old, and a couple other oaks that are close to that, they drop acorns daily. I know behind me, they're dropping on metal roofs, and it sounds terrible, and it's very loud, and it's obnoxious, but that doesn't mean we should take down all the oak trees, because of the leaves that have to be raked up on a consistent and regular basis, and cleaning up the acorns so that they are not embedded into our soils. And so I do think that we do have a burden sometimes to clean up after our trees, but again, I think that is, what's so important is the reward we get, not just individual on our own properties, but throughout the town, having a good canopy. Go by this property today, and you'll see probably a 30, 35-foot tree that has gorgeous yellow leaves to it. And again, I'm not diminishing that they can be messy, like I said, I've walked by there for 23 years, for 20 years, three times a day, I know exactly what, what they're describing, I don't recall the odor, maybe I have a poor olfactory sense, but I don't recall them, that being an issue, so obviously... So obviously, if you can read the tea leaves, I'm leaning toward upholding Liz's denial of the removal of this tree. With that, I'd like to go to any other commissioners and entertain a motion. Commissioner Gossett and then Commissioner Legree?
I think Commissioner Legree was up before I was, but-
All righty, Commissioner Legree?
This is just another good reason to bury our power lines. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Gossett, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, you know, we are a tree city, as the mayor's reminded us. I also went back and read the minutes from this particular Parks and Shade Tree Commission. And I also went back and watched the video of the meeting. And in what I've heard today, I really have not heard anything that has changed since the decision, the unanimous decision was made by the Parks and Shade Tree Commission. Any additional information that's been presented that was any different than what the Parks and Shade Tree Commission has heard? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion out there from anybody? David, I'll let you have one more minute.
Okay. I was unable to attend. We did not receive notice of the tree. Sussex Tree did that meeting on our behalf. If you review the minutes from that meeting, I don't think anybody ever brought up Section 4 of the city code where it would be a nuisance. It was just a request for us to remove a tree. That's literally what the request was in the Parks and Shade Tree Commission meeting. The other thing is, I'd like to go on record, is that Tom Evans is directly disputing what Liz Lingo says about this being a female ginkgo. And some people on the commission seem to think that if this is a male tree, that it's okay. Liz clearly stated in her minutes, she is the city arborist. She is declaring this tree is a female tree. And then lastly, and my point is, is the tree should have never been planted. It's the wrong species and it is the wrong sized tree to be in the location that it is in. Thank you.
Thank you, David. With that, I'd like to return to the commissioners and ask somebody to offer a motion in the affirmative.
Mayor, I'd move to uphold the decision of Liz Lingo and the tree committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that, Tony?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Schronowski and a second by Commissioner Tony Sharp to uphold-
To affirm the decision of the, I'm sorry, Mayor, to affirm the decision of the city arborist and therefore affirm the decision of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission.
To deny removal of the tree. All righty, thank you for your help. With that, is there any further discussion by the commissioners?
It was hard for me to hear the Solicitor, but just to confirm, a yes vote in this would be to deny the removal of the tree and a no vote is to allow the removal of the tree. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Thank you.
So again, repeat, let's repeat that.
A yes vote is to deny the removal of the tree and a no vote is to allow the removal of the tree.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to do a, if there's no more discussion, I'm going to do a roll call vote. I'm just going to cross my screen here in that particular order. Commissioner Susan Gay?
I vote yes, because I want to uphold the vote with what our expert arborist has said, as well as a unanimous vote of the Parks and Shade Tree Commission based on their discussions on March 22nd.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Tony Sharp, please.
Vote yes.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Patrick Gossett?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Tim Bennett?
While I respect the decision of the tree committee, I'm going to vote no. I don't think any of us would want that tree in front of our house. It's not so much a nuisance from dropping things, it's the smell.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Schronowski, please.
I vote nay. I agree with Commissioner Bennett. And after hearing some of the facts today, I don't believe that all of the considerations were made by the Park and Shade Tree Committee when they denied the request.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Legree?
All trees in general do not stink. It is a nuisance, so I vote to nay.
And the chair votes aye to deny the removal of the tree, upholding or affirming the decision of the arborist. And that makes it a 4-3 vote to affirm the decision of the city arborist. David, thank you very much. Eva, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to take a 10-second breather. And before we move on. All right, thank you very much. With that, we will go to the next item, which is a first item of Old Business. Update on an additional discussion and possible consideration of actions on offer from Tom Ibach for the city or museum to take possession of the old Dolly's sign. Like to make note, reminder that embedded in the agenda was one piece of correspondence, and that was relative to the disposition of the Dolly's sign. And actually, the correspondence, I believe, had pros and cons for what we're doing without picking one direction to recommend. With that, I'd like to give an update. Museum President David Mann is unable to attend today, so I'll give a report. At our last meeting, you'll recall that we learned that the museum folks want to accept the signed donation directly from the owner. We also learned that the sign owner, Tom Ibach, is amenable to a handoff directly to the museum. I want to have a reminder that the sign needs to be removed from its current location by the end of the year. The museum has indicated acceptance that of all costs, including removal, reinstallation and maintenance, that those costs fall on them. Museum President David Mann indicated the sign would be mounted on the east facade of the museum. The sign is actually slightly smaller than what is depicted in the illustration of the facade mount on the museum as created by the Cape Gazette. If you recall, our slideshow last time showed an illustration created by the Cape Gazette that showed a rooftop mount, but also a facade mount with part of the sign sticking above the roof and the rest of it mounted on the facade. And again, exact measurements apparently were taken and indicative that the sign is just maybe a little smaller than what was depicted there. Mr. Mann acknowledged that the sign is large and legally non-conforming, and thus they will be seeking from the Board of Adjustment a variance of sign size restriction on behalf of the owner. The hopes are that they get on the December 20th Board of Adjustment meeting schedule so they can have a decision made and then can remove the sign by the end of the year. The best costing for this project is removal of the sign in one piece, lay it on its side on a flatbed truck, transport it as a wide load up Rehoboth Avenue to the museum, and then install it all in one day with big production, three bucket trucks and a crane and eight to 10 people. That would be the optimum. But if the variance is not heard or acted on in December, then there will be additional costs of transport to the city public works ground for storage, as they indicated they have room to secure it and store it. And then additional costs to reload and transport to the museum for installation after the variance is granted, hopefully in their favor. And again, costs would be borne by the museum. I don't know that I see any actions at this point needed by the mayor and commissioners because the museum has agreed to take possession of the sign directly through the donation from Tom Ibach. But this agenda affords us the opportunity to make a motion if we desire to support this or otherwise, or we can just remain silent. And if we want to support this project with funding, as one of the commissioners mentioned at a previous meeting, we can take that up during our upcoming budget talks. So is there any comment? Again, I don't see that any further actions are needed by the commissioners at this point. Again, unless we want to take possession of it, et cetera. Are there any commissioner comments at this point? Commissioner Schronowski and then Commissioner Legree, go ahead, Commissioner Schronowski.
Sure. My preference is we take no action, nor do we offer to fund this in any way.
Thank you. Again, we can have that discussion of funding at the budget talks in case anybody else has a different opinion, but I would suggest we defer that till then. Commissioner Legree, please.
Is there anything we can do to facilitate the discussion of the variance by the Board of Adjustments in time to prevent the additional expenses of storage and moving it twice?
Well, you know, this is a zoning issue because the sign code is within the zoning issue and variances are not the purview of the Board of Commissioners. They're the purview of the Board of Adjustment. So Glenn, I would turn to you to see, is there anything we can do to expedite it or give opinions or whatever, or should those, are those things that actually we should avoid doing?
I don't think, Mayor, that the Board of Commissioners can do anything. I do think that if the museum wanted to reach out to the Chair of the Board of Adjustment to see if they could schedule a special meeting, but I think we're already probably late enough into the game that Ann would not have sufficient time to get it noticed and set for a public hearing any sooner than their regular meeting date in December. So I don't think there's anything at this point that really anybody can do to move it along more quickly.
And your mention of Ann and publishing dates is spot on. You know, with the Christmas coming up, Board of Adjustment is actually, I think, I think meeting a week. Yeah, well, they're meeting. With Christmas coming up, the Board of Adjustment is actually meeting a week earlier, so that kind of complicates things unfortunately. So they are ready and they may have even applied today. But otherwise, again, to go back to your question, I don't think there's anything else that we can do to expedite variance itself. So David has been in touch with Ann and I'm sure he'll be in touch with the Board of Adjustment Chair if he has any questions. Anything else, Commissioner Legree?
No, no, I think I've made my point.
Anybody else, please? Yes, ma'am?
I just wanted to concur and support the comments from Commissioner Schronowski.
Very good. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the members of the public. Is there anybody that has any comments? Carol Everhart? Or she left? Looks like she has left. Dan or Greer? I think they have left us. Rick Perry, any comments on the Dolly's sign, please?
Rick Perry is no longer on the call.
Rick says dropped off. Tom Evans, any comments on the Dolly's sign?
Tom Evans is no longer on the call.
Walter Riddingham is no longer in the room with us. Bunky Markert, any comment on the Dolly's sign, please? Not hearing any, we'll go to Laurel Ritter. Do you have any comments on the Dolly's sign, please?
No, I have no comment on the Dolly's sign.
Thank you, Laurel. Appreciate it. With that, are there any further comments by the commissioners? Otherwise, we'll come to a close. If not, it stands as is. Thank you all very much for supporting the museum and their efforts to retain this iconic sign. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the second item of Old Business, which is Consider Policy and Ordinance Amendments Relating to Solid Waste, Recycling and Yard Waste. We will approach these one at a time. There are a total of five operational changes that we will be conducting votes on each one after discussion and public comment. And then we'll be moving on to Item 2 under this topic, which is to consider four ordinances and again, conduct votes on those after discussion and public comment. These are things that we actually started, I think, back in May?
The initial request was made in April and May 10th was your initial workshop meeting on this.
So these have been on the table for a while. I think we've had plenty of time for discussion among ourselves and to receive comment from the public. I want a reminder that the proposed ordinance for fee structure is omitted here. That discussion resumes December 6th workshop. It may be likely the first agenda topic on December 6th, if I can get all that to work out. But again, discussion of fee structure is something that we will defer to another meeting. It is not on the table today. With that, we will go to the first operational change to be considered. And that is to change twice a week pickup of refuse annual end date from November 30th to October 31st, but, and this is an addendum out of the last meeting, but retaining citywide refuse pickup on the Friday after Thanksgiving. Again, this is in response to the last meeting. We have Jean Lee here from the city staff that's been very diligent working on this for all those months, and we appreciate her being here to answer any questions we might have. Is there any discussion? Or a motion to approve the change? While we're waiting, we'll go to public comment and then obviously to advance this, somebody's got to make a motion. With that, I'm going to skip Carol, Dan and Greer and Rick Perry, because apparently they've all, and Tom Evans, they've all signed off. And Walter's back. Do you have any comments on the timing of the twice a week pickup of refus, change of dates? And Walter shakes his hand, no. Bunky, are you back on yet?
He's no longer on the call.
And he's dropped off. And Laurel Ritter, any comments on this topic, please?
I really don't. I really only came on to be Bunky's backup. So I don't have any comment on any of the other agenda items.
Okay, well, I'm going to omit you unless you blurt out something. Thank you, Laurel.
Okay, that sounds good.
Thank you, Laurel. So again, we've got five operational changes we'd like to vote on today and then four proposed ordinance amendments to vote on today. Could I entertain a motion to approve the first operational changes?
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to change the twice a week pickup of refuse date from November 30th to October 31st, but retaining the citywide refuse pickup on the Friday after Thanksgiving.
All righty. Is there a second? Patrick, you do?
Yeah, second.
Yep, okay. So we have a motion by Commissioner Susan Gay and a second by Commissioner Patrick Gossett to approve the change in twice a week pickup of refuse annual end date from November 30th to October 31st, while retaining citywide refuse pickup on the Friday after Thanksgiving. Is there any further discussion or does anybody need to know any further details from city staff on this? Commissioner Schronowski, please. You're muted, Ed.
Sorry about that. You know, I really, really hesitate taking services away from our residents in what I think is a increasingly year-round community. I just, I've got a little bit of pause on this one. And I'm actually surprised we've not heard from more residents about it. So I'm just expressing my pause with this one.
Thank you. You know, we did, I don't know that we got any correspondence for this particular meeting, but previous correspondence, and in fact, one of the in-person speakers was, if you recall, was for- recall, was for, the all four, at least the first four operational changes. I don't remember if he made a mention on the fifth one or not. So we have gotten correspondence in agreement with some of this. You know, I too, you'll see in some of my other votes possibly that I agree with you. I don't want to get rid of services, however. This was presented using numbers and data, and I feel very comfortable that this will not do any harm and will be satisfying, especially because we included pickup on the Friday after Thanksgiving. That was a biggie for me. So I'm leaning toward a vote on this. Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Sharp, please.
No discussion. I just wanted to once again agree with Commissioner Shrinowski. We should really be very thoughtful about decreasing services to our community.
Mayor, if I could ask Sharon or Jean, with all of these operational changes, what mechanism is going to be in place to evaluate whether it has caused a negative impact or do you have anything in place that we'll be able to, a year from now, determine whether it worked or didn't work, or if it needs to be changed back?
Well, I can tell you, Commissioner, that the operational changes were all brought up by the street superintendent and the director of public works when we started talking about fees, because these were, I'll say, recommendations that were offered really for, again, as we said, efficiency of staff and not necessarily, you know, they're out there, they see it. So, you know, whether or not it affects a property owner negatively, you know, that wasn't, you know, it's not our intent to do that. It's to affect a property owner, it's just, you know, making it more efficient for the streets department and their staff. And it's not really a staffing issue, it's just one that lends itself to what makes sense in their world. And they see it every day. We don't, they're out there on, you know, every day of the week. And as also was mentioned before, they will have time, free up time to do other tasks that are associated with their job down there. Did I answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I've got Commissioner Gaye and then Commissioner Sharp.
Let Commissioner Sharp go first. It's fine.
I just wanted to speak on behalf of our full and part-time residents, that I don't believe that we have done any kind of special outreach to help folks become aware of exactly what's on the table, especially at this time of year. So I don't think we should lose sight that this is the one service that outside of our homes, that every single property owner interacts with, and I believe we will get quite lively discussions if we make these changes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gaye?
Yeah, you know, actually, I didn't think to ask this till just now, but I'm assuming, City Manager, that this takes effect, this particular one, takes effect next year, that we're not just going to cut off, you know, next week, that you're still going to be picking up. Well, I guess we only have one more pickup in November anyway, and it would normally, okay, so I think, so anyway, this takes effect, you're still going to pick up next week, and I guess there's probably not another one in November, right? Okay, that's fine. I was just checking. But what I was going to say is, I remember the data showing a significantly reduced amount of tonnage in November, but I was on the fence about this one, I still sort of am, for a long time. And one of the reasons was that I thought, well, even though it's a significantly less tonnage in November, it's still tonnage, it's still, it's still our residents producing, you know, 90,000 pounds or whatever of refuse, and I didn't want to put them at a disadvantage. But I didn't get any, I didn't get a lot of negative, I don't know that I got any negative feedback on this one, but I did get some questions about the fact that people were around over the holiday. And that's the reason why at the last meeting I asked about adding the Friday after Thanksgiving back in. And since you all have done that, you know, I feel like, you know, you've met us halfway on that. So I do very much appreciate you adding that date back in, and we may very well get, we may very well get feedback as we go forward. And I couldn't agree more with Commissioner Sharp that we must, must, must do a public outreach on whatever the changes that are adopted today. And if we do find adversely affects people, then we have to be prepared to reconsider as well.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comment?
You've not gone to the public on this one.
Okay. No, for the, we've already, we've already gone to the public. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. What I'd like to do is, we have a motion on the floor to approve the operational changes as noted, which has changed twice a week pickup of refuse annual end date from November 30th to October 1st, but retain citywide refuse pickup on the Friday after Thanksgiving. The motion on the floor is to approve this. We've had discussion, I'd like to do an individual roll call vote. Commissioners Tony Sharp?
Vote no.
Commissioner Ed Shrinowski?
I'll vote yes, but I do want to closely monitor this going forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Legree? Commissioner Tim Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Patrick Gossett?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Susan Gaye?
I vote yes, but I agree with Commissioner Shrinowski about monitoring going forward.
Very good. And the mayor votes yes also, so the motion is passed. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the second of five operational changes proposed, and that is item B2, B1B, change free bulk pickup from the last week of April and the first week of May to the first two weeks of April. This is referencing bulk pickup, which essentially makes bulk pickup earlier in the year rather than from what it is now. Is there any discussion of this or go right to a motion and then discussion?
I would make a motion to change the free bulk pickup from the last week of April, first week of May, to the first two weeks of April.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Patrick Gossett and a second by Commissioner Tim Bennett to change the free bulk pickup from the last week of April and the first week of May to the first two weeks of April. Is there any discussion and then I'll go to the public?
Just, I have a point of clarification, if I may. I know, I believe it was last year that we outsourced this process, and if you could remind me of why that was outsourced, or if I'm correct in that the process was outsourced?
Commissioner, yes. It was, again, an issue of not having the required staff at the time, and we did use a city truck and a city driver for that effort, but in fact, we wanted to get it done as quickly as possible, and we were able to bring in the other individuals to assist with us. So basically, it was because of the staff shortage.
And that took place between April and May, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any further commissioner comment before we go to the public? Commissioner Gaye?
You know, I just, in looking at the calendar and several years ahead and in also talking to people, I just think that picking up before Easter, which is essentially what we'll be doing, is a real disadvantage. People just don't come down and do their cleanouts until after Easter or starting at Easter or whatever, and that is typically later in the month. So, you know, I think this one's a real disadvantage for people, and I know we did get some correspondence on it as well, but I haven't heard anybody who said, thinks that these dates are beneficial to them.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? I also have not changed my leaning from what I've said before, and that's where I believe that leaving it alone is in the best interest of our citizens, especially because it helps to clean up our neighborhoods and yards are cleaned up rather than stuff sitting there. And I'm just afraid moving it up earlier might miss different property owners. With that, we'll go to the members of the public. Carol, Dan, Ergier, Rick, Tom. Walter, have anything?
I agree with Mayor.
He yells out, he agrees with the mayor. Bunky Marker, Laurel, I'm not going to call on you anymore, so we have exhausted the members of the public. With that, I'll go to Commissioner Legree.
You're muted.
How much, how much do we save by keeping it in-house, City Manager?
Pull that within an inch.
We're looking up some data for you.
You can, you're welcome to ballpark it.
I believe it was around 15,000 that I had in the slides previously. I don't have the number with me. Kevin is trying to look it up, but just the labor cost was about $15,000 for it.
Thanks, Jean.
Any other discussion by the commissioners? If not, I'll do a roll call vote by the commissioners. Commissioner Ed Shrinowski? Let me review. Remember, the motion is to change free bulk up from what it is now, the last week of April and the first week of May, to the first two weeks of April. Commissioner Shrinowski?
I vote no.
Commissioner Legree? Commissioner Tim Bennett?
I vote no.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote no.
Commissioner Gaye?
Vote no.
Commissioner Sharp?
Vote no.
And the mayor also votes no for the reasons indicated. That vote fails seven to zero. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move to the next, the third operational change, which is to change yard waste container and bag collection from the first, third, and fifth Wednesdays to every other Wednesday. Would like to entertain a motion on this, but first, Jean, if you could reiterate, please, what one of the ramifications of changing the yard waste to every other Wednesday might be in reference to the cycle for recycling cleanup?
So with this, we were looking to put recycling and yard waste on the same weeks that they were picked up, because right now, one's every other and one's first, third, and fifth, which aren't always the same week. So if we could put them both to every other, then if somebody came down that doesn't live here full-time, their yard waste and their recycling would at least go out on the same week, not two different weeks. Sometimes they do go the same week, sometimes they're different weeks right now, so we're just trying to get it all together.
Thank you. So could we have a motion in a second and then we'll go into discussion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shrinowski and a second by Commissioner Gaye to change the yard waste container and bag collection from the first, third, and fifth Wednesdays to every other Wednesday. Is there any discussion among the commissioners, please?
Just for clarification, this would start when?
This would start in January, when our calendar for our new year comes out.
Any further commissioner discussion? I've had the same leaning before, that the first, third, and fifth Wednesdays is the premium for memory's sake, so to speak. However, I do believe in the rationale that if we're going to change it and it mirrors the recycling pickup date, then that would be a good thing. So I'm leaning toward favoring this. Is there any other commissioner discussion before we call the question, before I go to public comment? Hearing none, I'm going to go to public comment. I think the only person we have now speaking is Walter Brittingham. He's shaking his head, no. With that, is there any further discussion? Commissioner Sharp?
I am very curious on all of these, if we actually have a communications plan on
We get the information out as best we can at this point, Commissioner. I realize it's not satisfactory to you. We'll try to do better.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, if there's no further discussion, I'd like to call the question. We'll do a roll call vote. The motion in front of us is to change yard waste container and bag collection from first, third, and fifth Wednesdays to every other Wednesday. Obviously, a yes motion means that collection of yard waste containers and bags would change to every other Wednesday. With that, I'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Bennett?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Legree?
Yes.
Commissioner Gaye?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Shrinowski? Who did I start with? Tim?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I try to rotate and it gets confusing. And the mayor also votes yes, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. With that, we'll go to the fourth operational change of five, and that is to consider changing Monday through Friday loose leaf pickup to the south side of Rehoboth on Thursdays and the north side of Rehoboth on Fridays. Would like to have Kevin Williams just reiterate that I think it's important to know that right now, it's five-day-a-week pickup. And as they were mentioned at the last meeting, a desire to maybe change it all to Monday through Tuesdays, and your answer to that, if you would reiterate?
Yes, Mayor, I was just going to share my screen for one moment, just to make it clear that this is the current situation now with loose leaf pickup. And you can see that on Monday, you know, it's four or five streets, on Tuesday, it's four or five streets, Wednesday, it's four or five streets. And I just say that because there was a lot of concern expressed at the last meeting that we were reducing the number of pickups per resident, and it's not. We were just consolidating them so we would mass on leaves, loose leaves, on Thursdays and Fridays, which falls in well with our, now that we're not picking up trash on Thursdays and Fridays in November, these guys can move and mass on the leaves. So that was the whole intent. You still get, every resident will get loose leaves picked up each week. We would do it similar to the trash, south side on Thursday, I think, and north side on Fridays.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion and then we can go to discussion.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Ed Shrinowski and a second by Tim Bennett to change the Monday through Friday current loose leaf pickup schedule to the south side of Rehoboth on Thurs, to south side of Rehoboth on Thursdays and the north side of Rehoboth on Fridays. Is there any further discussion by the commissioners?
Yeah.
Commissioner Gaye, please.
Kevin, I appreciate you showing that list of when it picked up, but I guess I'm wondering, you know, are there staff problems, are there manpower problems on this? Because I've had a couple of people say to me that they've, their leaves have been sitting out for a couple of weeks and they haven't been picked up yet, and, you know, so they were wondering how, if it's that difficult, you know, how you're going to get around the entire city in, you know, or half the city in one day and half the city in another day. So, and do you have the trucks and the people to do that? So, and do you have the trucks and the people to do that, that much in a day?
So we have, we have the vehicles and the equipment. We're very short of people, as you know, still. So the fact that we're still doing twice-a-week pickup in November, which is now, which is also our heavy leaf time, which is part of the reason for requesting to only do trash two days a week in November, and then we can mass on this. So we have the equipment, we have the vehicles, we're just short people. This allows us to mass those people that instead of picking up trash, can now focus more on, on leaves, loose leaves.
And the other concern I heard, and I think this came up at the last meeting, was a concern that the leaves were going to be scattered, because people are doing the work over the weekend. It's just, it's just a simple fact, that's when they do it. And so they're going to be sitting out there all week and potentially clogging our storm drains. And that was another concern that I thought was valid.
Well, you've got my area in the north, we've always had Thursday and Friday pickup, and I have not seen that problem. Certainly, if we get the hurricane of the nor'easters in, and it's dry, they could certainly blow all over, but otherwise, I really don't, haven't witnessed any problems. Any other commissioner discussion before we go to the public? I'd just like to say, I support this. My main concern was that if we do this, that I want to see a commitment that we indeed try to pick up everything on Thursday and Friday that would, what we've said we would, and not let it have it go over into the weekend. I think that's very important. With that, we'll go to the public. Walter, anything? He's shaking his head no. So there's no further discussion. We'll go to a roll call vote. If you recall, the motion is to change Monday through Friday loose leaf pickup currently to south side of Rehoboth pickup on Thursdays and north side of Rehoboth pickup on Fridays. With that, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Again, I am rotating the, who I'm calling on. Start with Commissioner Gossett.
I vote yes.
Commissioner Legree?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Schronowski?
Aye. I understand the rationale on this one.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
And the mayor votes aye also, and the motion is carried. Thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to the fifth of five operational changes, and that is to update the fee to consumers to charge the going rate for the yard waste container. Jean, I'd like to have you review what the original fee started out as, and what you proposed, and then what you've amended it to since, since the last upgrade and, or update in pricing.
Okay, so the original fee I said that we should up it to was 50, because our price of the containers was just over $50. But then, since we've received the email and the letter, and I do not have the letter in front of me, but it was just over $70 for the containers now, the price for us to purchase them. So we are just, instead of going with 50, we're just going with the going rate so that we can keep up with the price of the containers. And this is just the yard waste container, which is an optional container for people. They do not have to use it. They can use the paper bags, or there's loose leaf pickup as well.
Very good. Thank you very much. Are there any further discussion of the commissioners on this topic? Commissioner Bennett?
So if someone already has one of the yard waste, one of the city yard waste containers, does this affect them, or is it only for people who get new containers?
This would just be for the people purchasing new containers.
So if you already have one, this doesn't affect you?
Nope, doesn't affect them at all.
Thank you.
And it would be new containers, not, not just the first one, but if you want additional ones, then each one would be that fee. So you're, you're not limited in how many you can purchase. It's just that the fee is going to go up if this passes. Is there any other additional commissioner discussion? We'll go to the members of the, I, let's see, my, I'm fine with the going rate. They're expensive. They're also a very high-quality product, actually. Walter shakes his head up and down and has a thumb up in the air, so that means he's in favor of this. Thank you, Walter. With that, if there's any additional discussion, Commissioner Bennett, please.
I do have a question, as these are getting more expensive. Mine is, mine had disappeared for a while, and then it had shown up. Is there a, are these marked and to each resident, or is there a number on them that's assigned to each residence?
So, yes, the yard waste containers, because people pay for them, we do track the serial number on them. So we do have people actually, every now and again, call in and say, hey, I think my neighbor has my container, and we tell them what the number is, and they seem to resolve it. So yes, they do have a number, and yes, we do record it, and we would continue to do that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, mine, mine was gone for about a week and a half, and then it just showed up again. So thank you.
Oh, it's so irritating to find your number at your neighbor's house, isn't it? If you look on your, I think of recycling also, and your yard waste, if you look on there, they have embossed serial numbers that might be, the yard waste might be something like 0012495YW, 95 meaning that's the gallon capacity, and then YW for yard waste.
I do just want to say that we don't track the recycling numbers, because we have always given those out for free. We do not know what your recycling one is. If your neighbor takes it, we give you a new one. They've always been free anyways. But the yard waste, because you pay for them, we have tracked them, and we do have the numbers.
Very good. Any further, any further questions by the commissioners? Commissioner Legree, please.
Jean, is there, oh, this is terrible, and I want to say, is there a list somewhere that, that assigns all of the brown yard waste containers to wherever they belong? Because in our neighborhood, we just gather up four or five yard waste containers and fill them up, and then put them out, and then take them back to one, just where they need them, and
So our list reflects
It's been a community effort for a long time.
Our list reflects whoever purchased the can, it would be listed under their property. So if you guys have intermixed them, there's really nothing we can do about that. We, we record it to who purchased the can.
And when did you start recording?
Long before I started working here. The list, it was just inherited over the years, and then added to.
Oh, no. Okay, I'll come down and get everybody's number and try to get it all straightened out, I guess. Thanks, thanks, Jean.
Thank you. Any further discussion by the commissioners? We've had public comments, so we'll do a roll call vote. Again, the motion is to update the fee to consumers to charge the going rate for yard waste containers. Again, to charge the going rate. With that, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Legree?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Schronowski?
Sorry, aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Gay?
I vote aye.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Tim Bennett?
Aye.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote aye.
And the mayor or the chair votes aye also. That motion is carried six to one. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jean, so far. Don't go away. We've got four more ordinances to change this time. Let's take a look at 227-1. 220, according to the agenda, 227-1 is amending the definition of waste container. We can certainly have Jean explain some of this. I will take a first quick stab at it, that 227-1 amends the definition of a waste container. And as we talked in previous meetings, the result of a favorable vote for this amendment is that it requires a tipper mechanism to be on the refuse container, the waste container. It eliminates non-tipper compatible containers. So if you have something out there with just two rubber handles on it, but it's not the tipper mechanism that is capable to be used by our modern garbage trucks, then that becomes illegal. Are there, let's do the same process. If we could get a motion to amend 227-1 relating to the definition of waste container, and then go for discussion.
Mayor, I move amending 227-1, definition of waste container.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. With that, we have a motion by Commissioner Schronowski and a second by Tim Bennett to amend Section 227-1 relating to the definition of waste container. In front of us today, by the way, is version number nine in front of us. Is there any commissioner discussion? Commissioner Sharp, please.
I have a question, Mayor. Are all of our trucks, are they, are they tipper trucks?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes, they are.
So when I observe currently that they load everything from the back, is it just because they are not using the tipper mechanism?
Well, they could be. The tipper mechanism, mechanism on ours is in the rear, so they roll it up to the back, and it can flip it up. It's not, not the arms, scissor arms that you see like on a waste management or the like. It's in the rear of the vehicle.
It's actually a little, a little box about this big, mounted onto the back of the truck, that hooks under the tipper mechanism of the trash can, and then, and it allows it to tip. So as Kevin mentioned, it is not that big grabbing arm of Blue Hen recyclables, for instance, Commissioner.
And how do, how do you know if you have a tipper can already? And where do you find that information?
Well, I think we're going to have to have a communication plan, and have some pictures, seriously, have some pictures and advise people what it means. But I think a picture's worth a thousand words, and in this case, maybe worth 2,000 words.
And this would go, this would go into effect in January?
No, July.
In July of 22?
This goes into effect July 1, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
Is that correct? Correct.
Okay, and then
Commissioner Sharp, anything else?
No, I, I'm good.
Okay, we've got Commissioner Gay, Schronowski, and Legree. Commissioner Gay, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I, well, you know, and I understand this is just a definition. I get that. I don't really have a problem with the definition, but there's some things we haven't resolved. We talked about allowing different sizes. In fact, we talked about the city providing, making available different sizes for people that wanted the small, and I don't, I don't, I think the largest is 95 gallons, and my understanding is there's actually two sizes below that. There's maybe a 32 and a 64, and I don't know that we have yet determined that, nor have we determined if we're going to be giving these to people as, as part of their package fee. So, you know, I'm a little uncomfortable without those things resolved, even though I understand it's just a definition. But I also, you know, totally agree with you that we need to have pictures and, and, you know, other helpful information so people can know what this is all about.
Well, I want to say I disagree with you in terms of holding, holding on this. I would like to conduct and go through with the vote. I do agree with you, however, that we certainly can bring up in the future whether the city's going to provide cans or not and sizes. But right now, with that out of the equation, I don't think it's applicable to this particular amendment. Anything else? Commissioner Gay, you're good? Commissioner Schronowski, please.
Thanks. Follow-up on that, I, I was under the impression that we did resolve the, the issue whether we were going to provide them or not, and decided that we would not be providing city, city, I guess, manufactured waste, waste buckets. But I just, we, we've, we've had a lot of discussion about this, and I just want to confirm that any of these changes is not going to prevent someone putting a bag out day of, Jean, can you just confirm that?
Well, that, that, that's a future amendment that's on our agenda, so we haven't gotten there yet, Commissioner. Yep, so hang tight, hang tight.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett, please.
Yes, do we know how many, and this might just be an anecdotal thing, but do we know how many residents don't have or currently have the tipper type cans? Are we, are we looking at, is it a handful of residents, or is it going to affect a lot of people?
I don't think there's any way of telling that, or knowing that, Commissioner. So the answer is no, we don't know.
Okay. Any other commissioner discussion? I'm fine with this, because it allows for, requires tipper, if you're going to use a solid waste container, it requires use of a tipper mechanism, which saves our employees' backs. In other words, in reverse, it does not allow for use of non-tipper containers, which they have to pick up fully, 100%, and empty it in, which I think it does more harm than not to our employees' backs. With that, I'm going to go to the public. Walter, you have any comments? He gives a thumbs up. He approves this amendment. With that, we'll go back to the commissioners. Commissioner Gossett?
Just a clarification, and this is probably to Mr. Williams. Should we at all address maximum size here? I know one of the issues is talking about, you know, our staff members' backs. They do have to move it from the curb to the truck. Many of them have wheels, some of them don't. Are any of those issues need to be addressed, or we're comfortable with just leaving it as a reusable rigid plastic container?
Commissioner, that's never been raised to me as a, as a concern about the size of it. So I think as long as it's, you know, got wheels on it and can wheel it out, and it's got the tipper, I think at, what was the 96-gallon container, I think they can handle that.
Okay, but we don't address wheels there. I just, you mentioned that. I'm just curious, is trying to figure this out through, the concerns of the staff. So I just offer that up as a, as a concern.
Well, if you, if you found that in the future, Kevin, would you bring that back to us, and we could certainly amend, amend the code at that time? I'm not sure that any tippers compatible cans I've seen don't have wheels, so, but if you keep an eye out and let us know, and that way, we can go forward with this. Are there any other comments by the commissioners? If not, I'd like to call, call the vote, and that is to amend Section 227-1 relating to the definition of waste containers. A favorable vote, again, changes the definition of waste container so that it must be tipper compatible. With that, I'm going to start with Commissioner Schronowski.
Aye.
Commissioner Gay?
I'm going to abstain. There are too many unanswered questions here.
Commissioner Sharp?
Voting no, because of no public outreach.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Vote no.
Commissioner Gossett?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Legree?
I vote aye.
And who have I missed? I've only got five here.
Because I abstained.
Oh, I'm sorry. We got, we got the abstention. Mayor, and Mayor Mills votes yes, and so the vote carries. Thank you very much. With that, that is one down.
Tell me what the final was. Was it 5-2?
I'm sorry, say that again.
4-2.
4-2, okay.
4-2, one abstention.
Okay.
Thank you very much. That is one down and three to go. With that, our next item on the agenda says to address 229, 227-9 relating to the collection of refuse and collection times. 227-9, I'd like, let's see, essentially removes the ability to put out disposable containers, meaning bags. And I think the effort there was to try to save our workers' backs, perhaps. And so I'd like, let's, let's go ahead and do our same process, have a motion to, to approve 227-9 relating to collection of refuse and time limits, and then we'll go into discussion. I have a motion and a second?
I move to amend Section 227-9 relating to the collection of refuse and time limits.
Is there a second? Who's that? Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Gossett and a second by Commissioner Gay to Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioner Gossett and a second by Commissioner Gay to amend section 227-9 relating to the collection of refuse and time limits. Can we have some commissioner discussion, please? Well, I'd like to offer that I will not vote for this. I've said before that for some of our tenants, especially our elderly, but also those that generate minimal trash, I'm willing for them to put out little bags and not have to put out a full container for one little teeny bag. And that's my rationale. I said before I would be amenable if it becomes a problem to limit the number of bags put out so that a tenant doesn't put 60 bags out. And that's more referencing probably our high-rise condos, so that may be a future discussion. And that's my comment. Is there any additional commissioner comments? Commissioner Legree?
I got more negative feedback from voters on this than anything else, and they were all from folks who did not want to do away with the bags. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Any other commissioner comments?
Yes, I also received the same thing of negative to this change, but also the recent change here of changing the phrase from lot to dwelling. I would like a little more explanation on that because that seems to be a recent change that I don't remember discussing.
I think, Commissioner, the issue there is whether we should do residential lot or not, and I got to thinking about numerous dwellings on a single lot. So I thought we should reference dwellings instead of just a single residential lot because it's each dwelling that's going to get a container, not each lot. You could have multiple containers on one lot.
And that was actually presented in the version of our last meeting, November 8, I believe.
I think so.
Yeah, thank you. Any additional commissioner comment before I go to the public? Hearing none, I'll go to Walter, and just no comment or no interest. No comment from Walter Brittingham. Thank you, Walter. With that, we have a motion on the floor and a second to amend section 227-9 relating to the collection of refuse and time limits. Effectively, a yes vote changes the definition of lot and dwelling, but more importantly, disallows the, or removes the ability and opportunity to use bags as disposable containers in lieu of rigid containers. Is there any further discussion by the commissioners?
Mayor, could we get the rationale from the city staff again on this one?
This was just to stop putting... You want to go?
Yeah, it was clearly an effort to enhance the beauty of the city, right? Because what we find many times are the bags get picked apart by birds, by foxes, and all the other rodents that run around.
And Kevin, you and your guys find that it is problematic and it is happening often?
It happens a lot, Commissioner. You know, it's not a weight thing. It just takes now time to go clean up the mess that the animals have made. So it was really just an aesthetics thing, not a weight thing on the bags.
Thank you. And I don't disagree with that explanation, but however, I don't know how well we've been enforcing the time constraints on putting out bags, so hopefully that hadn't contributed to anything. With that, is there any further commissioner discussion? As I said before, I will not vote for it because I want to allow for the use of bags. Any further commissioner discussion? If not, I'm going to do a roll call vote, and that is, Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
No.
Commissioner Legree?
No.
Commissioner Srinowski?
I'm going to abstain.
And the chair also votes no, and so the vote is a 5, 1, and 1, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. That's two down and two to go. The next item on old business is to consider an ordinance amending...
I think you said the motion carries. The motion was rejected.
Correct. Thank you. I'm glad somebody's keeping an eye on me. Thank you very much. Okay. We're going to go to looking at amendments to 227-11 relating to the collection of yard waste and recyclables and collection times. That is specifically 227-11, which looks like primarily defines the stop date in mid-May, gives it, rather than a rigid day of date, it mentions the second Friday, and also it changes the start date from October 1 to November 1. So it is a start date approximately four weeks later than it is currently. All righty. Again, I'd like to receive a motion and a second favorable to passing this, and then we'll enter into discussion.
Mayor, I move that we adopt a draft ordinance amending 227-11 relating to the collection of yard waste and recyclables and collection times.
Do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you very much. With that, we have a motion by Commissioner Srinowski and a second by Commissioner Legree to adopt the amendments to 227-11 relating to the collection of yard waste and recyclables. I'd like to have commissioner discussion, please. Commissioner Sharp and then Commissioner Gay.
Mayor, my only comment is it's obvious. It's another reduction in services, and I have had several comments from neighbors as well as emails that do not understand because they feel very strongly that they have lots of leaves in the month of October.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gay?
And I have heard similar comments, but I've also, people have also commented on the bagged and bundled being maybe placed on the street at any time. They like that flexibility.
Thank you. Any other commissioners?
I just, I brought this point up before, and it hasn't been addressed to my satisfaction, but earlier we talked about passing along the cost of the yard waste containers as is whatever our expense is. But in line 26 of this amendment, we say is placed within city-owned and furnished yard waste containers. So I'm just curious, do we, who owns it then if it says here city-owned? So we're selling it to them or renting it to them, we're leasing it to them? I think the cost is administratively administered. Perhaps we should just say that is placed within a city furnished yard waste container. That way, there's no question of selling it or what have you. It's administrative. I just think it's confusing.
Okay. Point well taken, Commissioner. We can change that.
It also appears in line 34.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on one pause. So let's just review what Commissioner Gossett proposed as an amendment to this. It actually, I think, is acceptable to present, Glenn, because it doesn't, it's not even more restrictive. In line 26, the language would change to is placed within a city furnished yard waste container. And Commissioner Gossett, line 33, 34, would say the city will collect recyclables provided that recyclables are contained in a city furnished recycling container.
That's a recycling container, though, and we don't charge for those.
So that should be left alone, the city-owned and furnished.
The only line 26 would be the change.
The only line change would be line 26, Commissioner Gossett. Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
All righty. So if somebody makes a motion to amend section 227-11 relating to the collection of yard waste recyclables, they would want to mention the, in addition, the proposed amendment of deleting on line 26, owned and...
The motion's already been made. I accept that as a friendly amendment to approve the amended ordinance with the change on line 26.
All righty. Commissioner Legree, second that?
Yes, knowing full well that I will probably be guilty of either petty or grand larceny if I can't find my numbers, but yes, I will agree to the second.
Thank you. So before we go to a vote, we are going to go to the public. Walter, you have something to say? Make sure that microphone's close to your face, Walters.
Thank you, Walter Brittingham, 123 Hennupan Avenue. As applies to all of these 27, I encourage you, because between the phone system and other electronics, it's confusing. There are so many people watch what their neighbors do. There are changes that are made, and I think most of these, because we don't know what health situation's going to be in the next year or so. But I think cooperating with Public Works, and I think Kevin and Mike are doing a good job with your, with the input from the commissioners, but I would encourage you to be sure to, and Gene chime in if you need, but there needs to be a phone number that 24 hours a day that you pick out of the automatic call distributor that people can call in at, am I going to be in violation of the law, that they can find out in the morning at 4 o'clock or at 8 o'clock at night, is tomorrow trash day or not? Because it, so to speak, changes in the course of the year, and otherwise, you're doing fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Any further commissioner comment? If not, we have a motion in front of us to amend section 227-11 relating to yard waste collection of yard waste and recyclables, in version in front of us, November 9, with the following change in line 26 to read is placed within a city furnished yard waste container, thereby eliminating the words owned and. With that, is there any further commissioner comment? If not, we'll do a roll call vote. Commissioner Sharp?
No.
Commissioner Tim Bennett?
Yes.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Legree?
No.
Commissioner Srinowski?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Commissioner Gay?
I'm going to vote no on this one.
Four, three, four, five, six. Oh, and the mayor, and the mayor votes yes. I believe it's doable with the increased volume warrants, vacuum collection at that certain time, and otherwise, they can use the bags and the yard waste containers. With that, the motion does not carry, and we'll go on. That is three of four. We'll go on the next item of old business, which is...
3-3 abstain.
Yeah, the final vote tally was 3, 2, 1 abstention, correct?
I had 3-3, 1.
3-3, I'm sorry. I've got my...
There's a lot going on here.
Thank you. 3-3, 1, and so it still does not carry.
Correct.
Because it was a tie.
Correct.
Very good. Thank you very much. Keeping an eye on me, city solicitor. With that, we'll go to the fourth of four items here, and that is to look at 227-24 relating to billing cycle and clarifications. This is amending 227-24 relating to fees for recycling collection, and while it's titled fees, we are not talking about fees. This is specific at this time, and the desire to pass this today is, as Gene indicated, so that we clarify that it's going to be, billing is going to be changed to quarterly billing cycles, and they need time before the first billing cycle to be able to exercise new forms and develop new forms and everything. Would like to remind you that, as I mentioned last time, I know that there's some additional changes proposed by Commissioner Gossett and maybe some others, but those proposed changes deal with a fee structure, and those will be deferred till discussion of fees at our December 6 workshop meeting. So our normal process, if we could get a motion to adopt or approve this amending of section 227-24 relating to fees for residential collection. Anybody make a motion?
Still moved.
Am I get a second? Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Ed Srinowski and a second by Commissioner Tim Bennett to amend section 227-24 relating to fees for residential collection, and the version date, November 9. And as I mentioned, the goal of this, if you will, is to divide the billings into quarterly billings. With that, we'll go to commissioner comment, anything?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay, go ahead, please.
This is the one I've had the most trouble with all along. First of all, let me just say at the outset that I do not mind at all the quarterly billing. I support that. I think Gene has obviously done a lot of work with this. I understand she needs a lot of lead time, so this is nothing against all of the efforts that she has put into it. But we have been talking about various code changes, I think the city manager says, since May, so we don't really know when we're going to resolve some of these unresolved issues. Meanwhile, I'm looking at a part of our code that has language in it that I would not vote for, which is the fees that are currently on here because we know we're going to be changing them. But also, we learned recently that that very first line about how we've been charging for garbage and refuse collection and the fact that it's, that we probably have been violating code by charging for dwelling and not per lot, and we've not reached any solution about how to deal with that, that my concern is, I don't want to go on record voting in favor of something that has language in several parts of the code that I do not agree with because after today, nobody's going to remember this discussion. It'll just be in the code for what we voted on. So I don't want to vote on, and I do understand that Gene needs some lead time, and maybe that's just a signal to us to get on with fixing the rest of it, because I understand she needs some lead time, but I also understand she may not need more than a few months of lead time, so maybe we have some time to deal with. That's my issue with this one.
Well, Commissioner, respectfully, I understand your position. I'm in a position where I want and we need to pass this today in terms of the quarterly billing session. Otherwise, it's not going to happen, and we've got to go back to square one. Correct, Gene? She's shaking her head. So if you want to remove any of this extra language, and that would be acceptable to voting in the changes now for quarterly billings, if that's what has to happen, I'd like to see that happen. And again, this would be taken up again at our December 6 workshop otherwise, knowing today when we vote on this that it will be brought up again and there will be additional discussion. But we need to pass this today or we're not going to do quarterly billing, period. Commissioner Sharp, please.
I think Edward was trying to say something.
You can go first.
I think I need to understand, what kind of system do we have that takes seven or eight months to update it? I just need some clarification on the length of time that seems to be required here.
Okay, so the biggest part for our system is we have to completely rewrite our utility bill, which is both, is all water, sewer, and trash because we had customized it to separate them because our computers... it to separate them, because our computer system actually sees them all together. So we have to undo that, which we have to do through a different company. We can't do that ourselves. So we have to get on their schedule to, for them to rewrite the form to do it, and we have, from experience, learned that it takes more than a month just to get on their schedule. So there's going to be some time where we're not even working on this, we're just waiting to get on their schedule. And then we don't want to be testing this in June, because the people that do it are the same people that run the election, they're the same people that run taxes, and they're the same people that run regular water and sewer. So we internally need time outside of doing those jobs for us to test it before we send it to anybody. So I know that it seems like a lot of time, but for us and what our other jobs are, we, we need this much time to do it.
Okay, that, that's helpful. Thank you. The other question that I, actually, it's just a comment, that the only feedback I've gotten on this has been folks raising their eyebrows and saying, in a, not an accusatory faction, in an accusatory way, but more factually for them, that their perception of this kind of change is, is, and I emphasize the word perception, is that once you change something to quarterly, as prices go up, it is more tolerable to the end user, and so you almost mask to them exactly how much they're paying for something. So I just wanted to share that, not to really debate that, because it's really just perception, which is not necessarily the reality.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Schernowski?
Yeah, I, I was hoping that, I don't have a problem with this per se, and I do agree with Commissioner Sharp. There is a perception here, and I think the communication is going to be key, but I was hoping that Commissioner Gay could articulate the, the issue you have with lines 19 and 20, with changing it from dwelling to, from a parcel of residential real estate to, to dwelling. I just didn't understand.
Because, you know, people that have, well, my understanding is that people who have a rental license, like on a second dwelling, pay double, pay two separate trash fees, but if someone has a second dwelling and they don't have a rental license on it, then they're not charged. So, but it's, it potentially has been, first of all, the, the line, as it read before we made any changes, basically didn't allow us to collect two fees, but we've been doing it for years, so that's a first problem. And the, the second one is that now that it says dwelling, it sort of implies that there's going to be a second fee, whether there's a rental license or not. And so, you know, that's not good. So that's the problem.
Again, my, my desire is to act on this today. If you're more comfortable removing what's in red line, at least on my paper, red, and returning lines 19 and 20 back to their original, and line 27 back to the original, then I would entertain a motion to, to do that, so that we can move forward.
I guess, if I could interject, I guess if the intent is to charge one fee from every occupied dwelling, then, then we should make the language say that, which I think is what I heard Commissioner Gay say. So, "The city shall collect from the owner or occupier of each occupied dwelling an annual garbage," and I mean, just insert occupied in there, would that resolve the issue?
I would concur with Commissioner Gay in that, and the mayor's suggestion to reverse this out and just focus on the quarterly billing at this period of time, because this also, you know, there's been discussion, I've heard from constituents calling, about rental license, and, and that we should also look at additional charges for larger rental licenses based perhaps on bedrooms or something of this nature. So I, I just think to keep it as clean as we can, I understand the, the time, time needed to make the changes on the quarterly billing, and I support that, but I do have problems with the rest of the information that, that is listed here. So I think to keep it as clean as possible and allow the staff to proceed with the changes within the computer system, to take the suggestion of the mayor and just vote on specifically the quarterly billing. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And, and again, I wanted to recognize, I acknowledged you last meeting and this meeting, that you've got some other substantial changes there to present at the December 6th workshop, so we thank you there. So, Ed, you have your hand up, but after that, I would like to entertain the motioner and the seconder to amend your motions to return lines 19, 20, and 27 back to their original context.
Well, I, I disagree with that, Mayor. It, the, the original content is, is wrong. It's not what is currently being done in practice, so I'm, I'm not in favor of, of changing it back to that, but I would like to ask Sharon or Gene, what, what is the administrative practice? If there is, you know, if there are two dwellings on a property, and only one of them is, is occupied, and they use it for, dwelling is used for, for family or guests, what is, what is administratively done in, in that instance?
And let, let me just interject and make sure I clarify that my desire, as indicated by Commissioner Gossett also, is to return it to its original language, not that that's going to be there forever, because we're going to start talking about it again, and I think that we would recognize from this conversation that we would be addressing that starting the December 6th workshop. So Gene, did you want to respond to Commissioner Schernowski?
Okay, so currently, the way that trash is billed is it's billed for one trash if there's only one dwelling. So if there's a, example is a house, and it has a rental, and that's the only thing on that property, it's billed for one trash. If there's a house and a second apartment or a second house on the same one, and there's rental licenses on them, they're billed separately. The only way I know if there's more than one is if they have a rental license. So if there's properties out there with one parcel that has more than one house on it, but there's no rental licenses, they're only charged one trash. I, I don't know of any other way for me to know that there's more than one dwelling on a property other than the rental licenses.
And yet, I mean, not to continue this discussion, because this is something that we'll talk about in December, but if there's only one can utilize for those multiple dwellings, then why are they being charged multiple trash? I just, again, I think the easiest way to clean this up is just to vote specifically on the quarterly billing at this period of time and carry the rest of this further at, at the December workshop, as suggested by the mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Then, if Ed's not going to do it, then I'd like somebody to make a motion to amend the original motion to return lines 19, 20, and 27 back to their original text. Is that correct?
I, I think I made the motion, so I will accept that as a, as an amendment.
And Commissioner Bennett, you made the second. Would you also accept that amendment?
Yes, and I, and I also have a question.
Go ahead.
So regarding the fees, I assume that the residents will know what the full yearly fee is or annual fee. Will they have the option to pay it all if they want to?
You can always pay a credit on your utility bills. We have people that pay thousands and thousands of dollars in credits and then just let it eat away through the year, so that option to pay ahead won't go away, except for they will all be on one bill, water, sewer, and trash, so that credit will just be eaten away by whatever the next utility bill is. So they, they aren't, like, I can't just credit trash. It, our system sees all these things as just utilities.
Okay, so we can, we could talk about it at the workshop then, because I had a couple of questions about fees, but quarterly, I'm fine with. I just wanted to know if there was a, if somebody wanted to pay ahead, if they could.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gay?
So one change was made, thank you, I guess, but on line 30, then, then all that needs to come out, because first of all, it's, the use column is, is somewhat dated, and I'm not sure what we're going to do about that, but we haven't...
Commissioner Gay, the, the desire there is to defer on that to the December 6th workshop.
So that should all come out?
Yeah.
So the whole, all that's going to come out?
Well, that'll be part of our discussion December 6th.
I'm just saying, then the fees won't be part of the code. The fees will be, you know, maybe there'll be language in here saying, on whatever fees are established, but the fees won't be in here. So this is all going to get marked out.
That's for discussion. I know one commissioner's proposed that, I think, but that would be for discussion December 6th.
All I'm saying is, the, some of the red line information that's in here, we're putting back, and I, and, and there, but I'm asking if we're putting red lines through all of that about use and fees for purposes of this vote?
No, absolutely not.
Okay. Okay.
Any other commissioner discussion?
Okay, that's fine, just asking.
Nope, that's fine. Any others commissioner discussion? If not, we'll go to the public. Walter, anything on this topic? He's shaking his head, no. I'm fine with this, with the, going back to the original text as noted, and understanding that December 6th workshop, assuming this is on the agenda, which I intended to be, that we would then talk about the content between lines 30 and 31, et cetera, but I'm fine with the proposal as, as articulated. Is there any further commissioner discussion? If not, I'll call the question. I'll do a roll call vote. I don't know where I was last time. Commissioner Bennett?
I, I vote yes, with the understanding that we will discuss the fee aspect of this at our December 6th workshop.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Schernowski?
Aye.
Commissioner Legree?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
No.
Commissioner Sharp?
No.
And the chair votes aye, and the motion's carried. Thank you very much. That is five changes and four amendments to the code. That last vote was what, a five to two in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gene.
Thank you, Gene, very good. With that, we're going to move on to the next item of old business, which is consider adoption of a resolution setting a public hearing on the matter of amending Chapter 270 zoning, Section 270-4 definitions, and Section 270-46.1.2 wireless communications facilities to amend definition and revise regulations concerning the location, placement, construction, and maintenance of wireless communications facilities. If you recall, in front of us is a, again, resolution to go to public hearing to amend the zoning code specific to wireless ordinance, and again, because it's a, in the zoning code, we have to go to public hearing with this. If you recall our discussions we've had, we've talked about this change, and decided, voted to go to adopt a resol, or that's what we're doing tonight. I'm sorry, I'm getting tired. Also, want to be, be mindful that the ordinance makes reference to a design manual, and those conversations will start again likely at the December 6th workshop also. With that, the resolution in front of us, I would accept a motion to adopt the resolution, but we need to set a hearing date. The soonest hearing date could be December 17th. Ann, are you on board? Is that correct? Actually, I checked with her earlier, so if she doesn't respond, I know the answer is yes. That would be December 17th at 2:00. Needs to be a part of the motion.
Mayor, I, I move adoption of a resolution setting a public hearing on the matter of amending Chapter 270, Section 270-4, for a meeting date of December 17th at 2:00 p.m.
Second.
Who seconded? Tony? Very good. So we have a, a motion by Commissioner Schernowski and a second by Commissioner Sharp to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing in the matter of amending Sections 270-4 and 270-46.1.2 relating to tower-based wireless communication facilities, et cetera, with the public hearing date set for December 17th at 2:00 p.m. Is there any further discussion? Walter, any public comment? Nope, shaking his head, no. Commissioner Legree, you have your hand up?
I'm, I'm really glad to see this happen. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you very much. If there's no further commissioner comment, we'll do a group vote. Again, this is to adopt a resolution setting a public hearing on December 17th at 2:00. All those in favor signify by saying aye, and hold your hand up long enough that we can count.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And the, the resolution is adopted unanimously? Thank you very much. With that, we will go to the only business, only item of new business. What did we take out there? We took out the, an audit report that will happen December workshop, and we'll go to the last new business, which is present proclamation recognizing November 27th as Small Business Saturday in the City of Rehoboth Beach. I would like to, the proclamation is embedded in the agenda. I'd like to read it real quick, and that is proclamation, Small Business Saturday, whereas the City of Rehoboth Beach celebrates our approximately 350 local small businesses with storefronts in downtown Rehoboth, and the significant contributions that they make to our local economy and community, and whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, some 31.7 million small businesses across the country represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees, are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019, and employ 47.1% of all employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas small businesses across the country have faced severe challenges over the past two years, including economic disruption and staffing difficulties associated with the COVID-19 pandemic, 23.4% of surveyed U.S. small businesses reported that the pandemic had a large negative effect on business, and whereas the resilience and recovery of small businesses is vital to the well-being of our community and our country, and whereas 88% of U.S. consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic, and 92% of small business owners have had to pivot, as small business owners often must do, in order to stay open during the pandemic, and whereas 56% of shoppers reported that they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020, and more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media, or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation, and whereas the City of Rehoboth Beach, along with its partners, the Rehoboth Beach Dewey Beach Chamber of Commerce and Rehoboth Beach Main Street, often work independently and collaboratively to support local small businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and help preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups and economic development initiatives, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Stan Mills, Mayor of the City of Rehoboth Beach, do proclaim Saturday, November 27, 2021, as Small Business Saturday in the City of Rehoboth Beach, and I urge the residents of and visitors to our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants via in-person and online shopping on Small Business Saturday, and throughout the year proclaim this 27th day of November 2021. Stan Mills, Mayor. Thank you very much. Pleased to do that. Please remember to consider shopping in town on Saturday as well as any other days. With that, that's the end of business. We'll go to commissioner announcements and comments. Does anybody have any announcements or comments they would like to make? Hearing none. We'll go to review future meeting dates. What I have on the, yes, ma'am. Commissioner Sharp, go ahead.
Just one, just wanted to, before you, before we come to the end, to wish everybody a very, very thankful Thursday. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Anybody else? With that, we'll go to review future meeting dates, and what I have on the calendar for the Board of Commissioners is, I want to point out five meetings, and that is the December 6th workshop at 9:00 a.m. December 7th is a special meeting for Streetscape. December 14th, a week later, is a special meeting for Streetscape Number Two, and December 15th is our, which is a Wednesday, our joint, first joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the mayor and commissioners to talk about the CDP, and then, of course, December 17th at 2:00 is our regular meeting. So that's our immediate schedule coming up. Is there any further comment by the commissioners? For the good of the order, nothing? With that, I want to thank everybody. Hallelujah, we got through all those operational changes and amendments to the waste. I'm glad to get those off our plate. We've still got plenty of homework to do, and I want to thank you, and we will adjourn this meeting today at 4:52.
How about half a second?
We'll go to citizen comment at the end. Half, half a second? Does that translate into five minutes or two minutes?
15 seconds.
Go ahead. Walter Brittingham has good luck.
Not to chastise you, but for past several meetings, no matter what's come up on the bullet, bullet items, you have ignored citizen comment. I have nothing to say, except that. It would be nice that you remembered to say that last for the people that's out there in La La Land that might want to say something.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Citizen comment circled. With that, we'll, it's still 4:52, we will adjourn the meeting at 4:52. Thank you very much, everybody.